We'd like to call to order the council meeting for November 18th. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are seven members present in quorum. Councilmember Spatafor is absent.
And Councilmember Spatafor, we will be excusing him later on in the evening, is out of town. So with that...
We are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Does anyone have, anyone they would like us to remember at this time? All right, seeing none, if we could please rise.
If we could keep in our thoughts Ron Callen, who was a longtime community activist and recently passed away.
On the west side.
A west-side neighbor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the printed council proceedings of October 28th.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for the approval of council minutes for October 28th, 2019.
We have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
We are to special ceremonies. We have a tribute in recognition of the Greater Lansing chapter of Jack and Jill of America for their dedication to community and helping youth to grow and succeed.
And Councilmember Hussein, I think you've got a group of young people you'd like to come up and join you in the well?
Yeah. Come on up. Why don't you guys come right back by?
You're good. Don't worry. You're fine. You're okay.
Let me tell you, it is a, it's a true honor and privilege to be able to introduce and to recognize the group that you see behind me. I was, let me backtrack just for a minute. My other professional hat that I wear every single day is I am a public school employee. So I teach about 150 energetic, passionate eighth graders over at Waverly Middle School. And I teach social studies. So in addition to structure of government and American history from colonialism all the way up to the Gilded Age, we teach a lot about civic engagement. We talk about philanthropic giving. We talk about, and when we talk about civic engagement, we talk about what that looks like, political civic engagement, non-political civic engagement. We talk about community service, volunteerism, and really what citizenry means. And so when I was approached by the Lansing chapter of the Jack and Jill organization, they thought it would be wise if folks would actually come in here, the mothers that are involved with the organization, as well as the children aged two to 19. They thought it would be fantastic for them to come in and be a part of a city council meeting. I thought it would be wise to recognize them for the fantastic work that they're doing. And so before I have Ms. Hope Lovell come up to talk a bit about the organization and some of the things that they're charged with doing and providing for these young kids, I wanted to read part of the resolution because I think the resolution really says it all. Says that whereas Jack and Jill of America, Inc. was founded January 24th in 1938 in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, from a meeting of 20 mothers by the leadership of Marion Stubbs-Thomas with the idea of bringing together children in a social and cultural environment, the organization's national theme is the power to make a difference. And whereas Jack and Jill of America, Inc. is a membership organization with children ages, with, sorry, of mothers with children aged two to 19, dedicated to nurturing future African-American leaders by strengthening children through leadership development, volunteer service, philanthropic giving and civic duty. And whereas the Greater Lansing chapter of Jack and Jill of America, Inc. was chartered by the National Office March 12th, 1983, and the current chapter president, I believe is still Dr. Norenda Carter Andrews, is that correct? Fantastic. Wanted to make sure we had accuracy here. As mothers dedicated to racial uplift and empowerment in the African-American community, they strive to provide dynamic programming for all children of Greater Lansing. And whereas they provide themselves, or pride themselves, sorry, on continued support of and partnerships with local organizations and look forward to new relationships with community partners. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lansing City Council extends our appreciation to the Greater Lansing chapter of Jack and Jill of America for your dedication to the community and helping our youth to grow and succeed. We wish you continued success. What I'd like to do before I bring Mrs. Hope Lovell up is to move the resolution.
Wait. Thank you. We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. And before you do that, could we have the parents and relatives that are here supporting these young people, please stand.
Councilwoman Wood, Councilwoman Washington, Councilman Garza, as well as Councilman Jackson, I believe we had the city clerk in, we had the deputy clerk in, I don't know if I'm missing anybody. But we talked a little bit with, you know, really about city government, structure of government. We talked about some of the similarities between city, state and federal government. We talked about separation of powers. We talked about check and balances. And I could not believe how much these young people knew about this representative democracy that we're all a part of, the knobs and levers really to make their government go. And so I know that we have some future leaders among us, and that's, that's an incredible kind of feeling to be a part of. It was a, I think the energy and excitement was palpable in that room, so I really appreciate you guys. Mrs. Hope Lovell.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Councilmember Hussein, and thank you all, City Council. We just really appreciate this opportunity. And as you all know, it takes a village. So I just really want to give a special thanks also to my mothers who helped organize this. As you know, our wonderful kids, they're so boisterous, and we wanted to give them this opportunity. So a special thanks to Dr. Elaine Losbarker, as well as, I want to say, Dr. Alexis Travis. And just thank you just for this wonderful opportunity to really get our kids involved with legislative advocacy.
Okay. You guys. Whoa, whoa, hold on. Is there anybody that wants to say anything? I guess I should have asked. I figured we...
Yes. I knew he would.
Hello. My name is Zachary Barker. This has always been a dream of mine to be here in the city council, and hopefully one of my future days after I probably graduate college, I'll be right here. Some person said I'd probably take her.
You can have it.
I'm really thankful and grateful to be a part of this and be in this moment, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that it? All right. Thanks so much for being here, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, our next special ceremony is a presentation, the Lansing Citizens Academy graduates, class of 2019.
And that would be Councilmember Spitzley and the mayor. Could we please have those that are the Lansing City Academy graduates of the class of 2019 come forward, please, into the well? I know the mayor's already had one ceremony for you, but this is an opportunity for council to also thank you for your hard work.
So as you're, as you're coming up, I do want to thank you on behalf of council for your hard work. I was really pleased when the mayor started this program. What a wonderful opportunity to learn the workings of city government. And it's a 10-week program, you know, the participants do a deep dive into city government and their workings. We have them meet and talk to different city departments. And, you know, it's really an opportunity for our citizens to just become aware of how city government works and then be our ambassadors out there. So if there's a question about city government, you know, we've got folks out there who can say, "I know that answer because I was with the, I did the Citizens Academy." And so we're really proud of the folks that participated. Congratulations on completion. And so I have certificates for you. Before I do that, I wanted the mayor to say a couple words.
Well, thank you. I get to congratulate everybody here again. We had a great dinner. There was a really good video, Andy, I don't know if that, if that's available, is that on our YouTube site? It's a wonderful video that our public media folks did. These folks are, they have been all over the city. They've been in our wastewater treatment plant, they've been in our parks, they've been everywhere. And our, our video crews followed them around. So anyone who gets a chance, I would highly recommend going to the city's YouTube page and grabbing that video because it's awesome. We have been so proud and so excited that this program has taken off. Andy Crawford and her shop, Delisa, Erin, all of the folks in our neighborhood shop have worked so hard to set this up. And, you know, when you, when you do something like this, you don't know if you're going to get 100 people or nobody applying. But we, you know, we actually had so many people apply that we had to, we had to do a random draw. And, and I have just heard nothing but great things from the folks who've been able to go through and, and see all of the great things in our city, understand where all the tax dollars go, understand all the services that we provide. So it's not easy. You guys did what, every Wednesday night, is that right? Every, every Wednesday night for several months? So we joke that now they have their Wednesday nights free so we can put them on boards and things like that because they have all kinds of time. But they really put in the time and they put in the effort. And, and we are so proud of this second class of our Lansing Citizens Academy. So thank you all and congratulations, and we're excited for, for everything you're going to do as these newly educated Lansing citizens. Somebody, I will repeat this, I don't remember who said this to me, someone that night said to me, "I feel like I went from a resident to a citizen." And I said, "That is, that is exactly right. That is perfect." So thank you, everybody. Congratulations.
So what that means is we'll be expecting a slew of applications for boards and, because that's another great opportunity to serve the city of Lansing and is to be on a board and, or a commission. And so I have a number of these. I'm just going to call out some names, and if you hear your name come up, then I'll be more than happy to give you a certificate. Jasmine Anderson. Linda Appley. Richard Bali, Bailey? Bailey. Carl, oh my gosh. Una Dano?
I didn't know that was going to be a problem.
Ben Dowd. Melanie Fero. Amy Fountain. Banjor Musta. Vanessa Schaffer, Schaefer? Excuse me. Mary Beth Van Horn. Other members, Denise Van Loy. Paul Wolzniak. Well, again, congratulations. This is wonderful. Thank you for participating. Thank you for getting involved. Thank you. I'm sorry. If anybody wants to say something, please feel free. Please feel free to go and get our accolades from our city council office as well.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to comments by council members and the city clerk.
Comments by council members. Do we have any comments by council members? Councilmember Hussein and Councilmember Jackson.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that came out to our constituent contact meeting on November 9th. We had a great opportunity to have Chief of Police, new Chief of Police, Darryl Green, in with us. And he talked a lot about kind of the state of the police department and his philosophy with regards to policing, community policing. And then he really allowed for an extended period of time of questions, and I really appreciated his willingness, willingness to open himself up in that way. And my understanding is he then actually took off from my meeting and went over to southeast Lansing and actually attended a two-hour meeting over in southeast Lansing at Councilman Garza's, or in Councilman, sorry, Garza's ward. So we really appreciate his ability, I should say his willingness, to engage the citizenry here in Lansing. And so again, thanks to the folks that showed up. We had 30-plus. It was an incredibly cold day. This, this night seems to have taken on kind of a theme of civic engagement, and that's another way that people can become civically engaged. So we really appreciate the people that continue to prioritize those types of meetings. Regarding a couple neighborhood meetings this week, Churchill Downs, I wanted to make sure I announced their meeting November 19th, which is tomorrow at 6:30 PM. They'll be meeting at Wainwright School, which is located at 4200 Wainwright Avenue. Colonial Village Neighbor Association, we actually, we actually have the president on hand tonight. They will be meeting Wednesday, November 20th, 7:00 PM at Grace United Methodist Church, that's located in 1900 Boston Boulevard. My understanding is that they will be having their 2020 board elections that night. And they are also going to have a discussion centered on the old-school property at Pleasant Grove and Homes. And so there is a little bit of traction in terms of that building, interest in that building. And so there are some folks that are very eager to know what the community wants in terms of reactivating that space. And so there will be some conversations centered on that at that meeting, I do believe. Shake your head if I'm wrong. Okay. Thank you, Chris. And then, and then the last meeting to announce is Luton Rich Neighbor Association. They are meeting on Thursday, November 21st. That is at 7:00 PM at Mayflower Congregational Church located at 2901 West Mall Hope. Thanks.
Councilmember Garza, or Garza, Councilmember Hussein, did you want to talk about the MDOT meeting?
I was going to hold off because I, and maybe I'm wrong. Were you going to announce that? Mayor? Sure? The MDOT meeting for tomorrow, 4:00 to 6:00 PM? Open house down? Okay. Okay. Yeah, and I do have some information in front of me. So there is a, there is a project next year. It's a $60 million project, and it is going to encompass a whole lot regarding 496. And so there's going to be some repair that's done on the freeway. There's going to be some preventative maintenance on some of the bridges and things of that nature. Entrance and exit ramps are going to either be reconstructed or there's going to be some repair. There is going to be a meeting tomorrow, 4:00 to 6:00 PM. This meeting is at LCC West Campus, and the address is 5708 Cornerstone Drive. And that really is an opportunity for folks in the city, folks that might be impacted by that project, to engage MDOT officials. And again, it's kind of an open-house style. So I believe they'll have some informational boards and things of that nature up so that folks can see, take a look at those. But it really provides you an opportunity to ask questions and really get in the know with regards to this project. I have reached out, I believe the mayor's office has reached out to state officials, and we have asked that they are also ready to discuss the, in my opinion, the botched South MLK project. We know that that project on South MLK, it is a state project that was slated to begin August 15th. It was supposed to end November 15th. We were supposed to have eastern and westernmost lane concrete tear-out. Those were supposed to be asphalted in, and then we were supposed to have three lanes of asphalt overlay in the middle. And that project extends, was supposed to extend and does extend from Victor Avenue or the railroad tracks to south of Victor Avenue, all the way up to the city's southern edge. We don't even have two lanes completely done at this point. So our understanding is that they are actually going to try to complete the westernmost lane in terms of the asphalting in of. And then I think recess for the winter and then begin back in the spring with the three lane overlay in the middle. We know that traffic patterns have been disrupted, and we know that businesses have lost a ton of money during this debacle. We know that people's daily commutes have been disrupted. So I have asked that they be prepared to discuss that project as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. On a similar note, I'm just announcing our fourth ward constituent contact meeting. It's every fourth Saturday, so that's this November 23rd at Gregory's, which is 2510 North Martin Luther King. It's an informal setting. You can have brunch there. We talk about anything fourth ward and city of Lansing related. Or if nobody has anything to talk about and they don't want to hear me, we can just hang out, have some pancakes, no, chicken and waffles. I'll be coming from the Silverbells 5K possibly. That starts at 9:00, so I'll still be there, and hopefully you will too. So see you soon.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. Is Dawn Haddad here? No. Okay. So I'm going to make an announcement on her behalf. Dawn is the Outreach and Events Coordinator at Ellie's Place, and they are offering tours to the community this Thursday. Ellie's Place is a healing center for grieving children, providing peer-to-peer support groups for children and teens and their families in our community at no cost. One in 12 children in Michigan will experience the death of a parent or a sibling by the time they are 18 years old. This means that we have thousands of grieving children and teens in the capital region, and Ellie's Place is there to help. They are, I'm trying to find the address for this. Here we go. 1145 West Oakland Avenue. The tours are, hours are Thursday, November 21st at 8:00 AM, 10:00 AM, noon, 2:00 and 4:00. So basically every two hours from 8:00 to 5:00 o'clock, and every tour lasts about 45 minutes. So I let her know that I would make that announcement for her. Also, on December 7th, the South Lansing Farmers Market is hosting their annual holiday market, and that market is at St. Casmer in the gym, which is at 800 West Barnes. And there are still applications open for local. It is a very hyper-local vendor market, so we are looking for Lansing-made products. So bakers, makers, crafters, artists, anybody like that that's interested can go to SouthLansing.org to get an application for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other council member comments? Seeing none, we'll turn it back over to the clerk.
Thank you, President Wood. Just, we'll take a moment and thank everyone who was involved in the election earlier this month. We had an increase in turnout compared to the similar election four years before. Still not the turnout we'd like to see, but an improvement. So thank you all. Thank you to the election workers who worked so hard all day long. It's a difficult job that they do. We're always hiring folks, and we have some big elections next year. So anyone who is interested in working as an election worker in 2020, you can get some information at LansingMI.gov/clerk. And that is a paid position, so you can earn a little bit of revenue on, on a day and help your community at the same time. With that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience with a community event, you can have up to a minute to tell us the details of your event.
This is not my event, but I do think people should be aware that tomorrow on November 19th, Secretary Joslin will be participating in a town hall on changes as it relates to voting. It will be held at Sexton High School from approximately 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events? All right, then we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. So we will be picking up momentarily the sign-in sheet. The green sign-in sheet is for the Make, Save or Demolish. So if you received a notice at your home, you need to sign in on the green sheet if you wish to speak to, to those. And then the blue sheet is for the public hearings and the items, the resolutions on the consent agenda and ordinances for introduction and passage. And we'll be picking those up, we're picking those up as I speak, and we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor, sure.
Thank you. Wanted to congratulate a variety of staff, including ours, on several very successful public meetings over the last week or so. We had our participatory budget meeting at Trinity AME. We had a good turnout and made a great conversation about budget and priorities with citizens in the third ward. Yesterday morning, I, we had many, my understanding, up to 5,000 people at our mobile food pantry, and Councilwoman Spitzley, I believe, was there. So thank you for everybody who was there to help, all the volunteers, and I'm glad we're able to serve a number of folks of need in the community. In addition, last week, we also had our Community Connect here in City Hall, where, again, thank you Councilwoman Spitzley, who was there with me as we were trying to assist. And, and we were able to get a lot of agencies with a lot of our folks of need. So we're really doing a lot of work here in, in the city to help out those of need, and we're proud of that. Tomorrow, we have our next Housing and Resource Summit at Wexford from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and we're looking forward to that, getting information out to our neighborhoods and our neighborhood leaders. Councilwoman Hussein mentioned the MDOT meeting, the MDOT 496 meeting, and we do think they'll, they'll be ready to address the South MLK, although that may be a separate meeting all on its own, because we definitely have to have that conversation. Wednesday, this Wednesday, we have our next participatory budget meeting at Foster from 6:30 to 8:00. So come share any information you want to talk about with me and our staff as we prepare our next budget. This Thursday, we have our meeting to discuss the future of Moore's Park. We have a lot going on there and, and more to, more to discuss. I know we've discussed that, the council president and I have discussed that in the past, and we're talking a lot with the neighbors in Moore's Park. So if you are in that neighborhood, or you have interest in that area, or the park, or the pool, or the shelter, or, not the shelter, the pavilion, or anything else, then feel free to join us at Moore's Park on Thursday. Oh, it's at ASK, which is the old, Moore's Park School is now ASK, and it's there in the gym. Almost on Tuesday, November 26th, for those on the south side, there is a Jolly Road Construction Information Meeting at Mount Hope Presbyterian Church at 301 West Jolly from 4:00 to 6:00 on the planned 2020 Jolly Road repaving project. If you live in the area, information was mailed to all the property owners and residents on Jolly between MLK and Cedar, and we're holding the, the meeting in the fall instead of the spring since we're discussing the possibility of extending the three-lane, the three-lane section to just west of Cedar, which requires public meetings, and we're using federal funds. But if you're in that area, you have gotten notice, but want to make sure everybody else knows. Then Wednesday, December 4th, we have our Rutter Park meeting to discuss the future of Rutter Park and options and things we can do. of Rutter Park and options and things we can do. That will be at the library from six to eight P.M. on December fourth. And then we'll have two more participatory budget meetings coming up December third at Leo's Lodge on Jolly Road from six-thirty to eight, and December fifth in City Hall Lobby from six-thirty to eight. And then the other thing that I will mention is we, I know this came up in committee of the whole, and we're getting a lot of questions in our office about the curbside yard waste. We will be picking that up for one more week. The, we'll be picking it up through the end of next week is the schedule. We lose our seasonal employees, so, you know, our, we have limited number of employees to do the garbage pickup and the recycling and the plowing and everything else. We lose our seasonal employees, so we have limited capacity after that. So if you've got yard waste, you can leave it out. We know we're behind because the same folks who do the yard waste collection are the folks who do the plowing and things like that. So when the snow happened, they were in plows clearing and salting. So we know we're behind, and we will get what's out on the curbs through the end of next week, you know, if there's capacity after that, but it's highly unlikely as those workers are being tasked to other things. So that's kind of the answer. It's not a matter of not wanting to, it's a matter of not having the seasonal employees. So, but we will be picking up through the end of next week. And if you were missed, I know there was conversation, I think Councilman Garza mentioned that he was, he knew someone who was missed. If you were missed, give, give the cart office a call, and they will get there. I know I have been missed before, and my wife has said to me, hey, we got missed, and she's called, and they come out and they get it. So our employees are working as hard as they can, and we're doing our best to pick up and make sure that your streets are clear and your snow is plowed. So all of that is going on, and we'll, we'll continue to be busy and serve the public as best we can. Thank you.
Mayor Shaw, did you want to talk about your glove and hat collection?
Forgot, thank you. Yes, we've been doing our, our hat and glove collection at all of our community centers, and we collected overflowing boxes, so thank you so much to the public. We would like new and lightly-used hats and gloves, and we've actually been giving those out. I believe they were giving them out yesterday at the mobile food pantry, and we're already collecting and giving them out. So we are, we'll continue to collect at our community centers. In fact, I think we're, we're giving out like raffle tickets, and we're going to give away like a lug nuts box or some lug nuts tickets or something. We're trying to, to make, to have a little fun with it. But, but yeah, if you've got lightly-used or new hat and gloves that you want to contribute, any of our community centers or the Treasury Office and City Hall, we're accepting them. Thank you for the reminder.
Thank you. Anything else? All right.
Okay, we are to show cause hearings. We have three show cause hearings and consideration of orders to make safe or demolish. First one is for eight eighteen Nip Avenue, second one is for eight nineteen Cleveland Street, and the third one is for thirty-three oh nine Viking Street.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Madam President. The first one on board, again, as the clerk said, is for eight eighteen Nip Avenue. It was originally red-tagged, and it is just a garage. It was originally red-tagged January first, twenty nineteen. We had a public hearing on it, seven, July twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, at which time the hearings officer determined that the building was unsafe and dangerous and ordered the building demolished or made safe by September twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen. The S E V information for it is that it, I apologize for this. It's just a garage, so I don't really have the S E V value, but the garage has been vacant for more than a hundred and eighty days. Actually, the repairs exceed the S E V value, which is, for the property, is forty-two thousand four hundred dollars. And with that, we'll have a public hearing on that. The next one is for eight nineteen Cleveland Avenue. This one was originally red-tagged on August thirtieth, twenty sixteen. This is a fire-damaged home, and it was fire-damaged November twenty-ninth, twenty seventeen. Then it was submitted into Make Safe or Demolish process. There, the issue with this one is that there is no, the person does not have homeowner's insurance, so we really can't go back on that. But the, there was a show cause hearing on June twenty-seventh, twenty-nine, and the order was Make Safe or Demolish by seven twenty-seven, twenty nineteen. And then the request was sent to the city council for a show cause hearing on October fourth. And so we're having the public hearing today on that as well. The final one is for thirty-three oh nine Viking Road. It was originally red-tagged on December twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen. The, the S E V value for the home is forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. The estimate of repairs is one hundred and seven thousand dollars. The public hearing was... Sorry, I apologize. The show cause hearing was on January twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, and so the order by the demolition board of Make Safe Demolish by September twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen. And so we were, the request was sent to city council for a show cause hearing on October fourth, twenty nineteen, and we're having the hearing today. So those are the three.
Thank you.
We're having today.
And we have no one that signed in to speak on any of these?
So as part of the referral, these three will go back to public safety. Anyone that, from the public that is interested in these or the property owners, we will be taking these up at the public safety meeting on November twenty-first, Thursday at three thirty in the conference room on the tenth floor. Thank you.
Okay, and we are to public comment on legislative matters. And as I said before, that includes the consent agenda and the ordinances for introduction and passage, although it's my understanding the ordinance for passage will not be acted on tonight.
Correct.
And so I will read into the record the public hearings. Number one, Z six, twenty nineteen, parcel on South Large Street rezoning from G one Business District to H Light Industrial District. Number two, Z seven, twenty nineteen, thirteen-ten Knollwood Avenue rezoning from F Commercial District to B Residential District. Number three, Brownfield Plan number seventy-five, amendment number one, Capital City Market Brownfield Redevelopment Project. Number four, Brownfield Plan number seventy-eight, Temple Redevelopment Project at five oh two East Cesaree Chavez Avenue. And number five is terminating Brownfield Plan number forty-five, Old Town Temple LLC at five oh two East Cesaree Chavez Avenue.
Councilmember Hussein?
Sure. So all of these public hearings have actually been processed through development and planning, so I'll try to be brief. The, the first rezon request pertains to a property on South Large Street. This is one parcel of three parcels that makes up Liskey's parking lot. The applicant in this case is Edward C. Carpenter Family Trust, and the reason for the request is to make zoning of the subject property consistent with the H Light Industrial zoning of the property to the north, which is also owned by the applicant. Again, this parcel is, is one parcel of a three-parcel parking lot. Back in two thousand and eighteen, when the Gillespie Group was, they were trying to put together essentially their project, their six-hundred development project. And so what they did was they put purchase agreements in place with a number of property owners in that area. Ultimately, they never did purchase this property. So the parking lot as is, under G one Business District, is actually non-conforming. And so they would not be able to maintain that parking lot, sorry, in perpetuity without a special land use, is my understanding. So they essentially are asking for this property to revert back to its original zoning designation. In terms of thirteen-ten Knollwood Avenue and the rezon request from F Commercial District to B Residential District, the applicant in this case is the Walter Brown Estate. The reason for the request is to bring the residential use of property. Historically, this property has been used as a single-family home. So it's to bring the residential use of property into compliance with the zoning ordinance. As a non-conforming property, under F Commercial, there are monetary limitations in terms of what they can invest back into that property. Candidly, they are looking to potentially sell, and they are having a difficult time selling with, with this understanding out there that there are monetary restrictions in terms of what people can put into this as a, as a single-family residential property. With regards to item C, Brownfield Plan number seventy-five, this is an amendment to number one, Capital City Market Brownfield Redevelopment Project. One year ago, we approved Brownfield Plan number seventy-five, which, you know, essentially contained ten million dollars in, in capturable expenses, and it was part of a thirty-year Brownfield Plan. There is a need to amend essentially this Brownfield Plan. It deals with parcels, it deals with addresses. It does not change the length of the plan, it does not change reimbursable costs, it doesn't change project deliverables. Essentially, there is a small piece of land adjacent to Liskey's. It's been determined that this property needs to be purchased in order for the developer to do some of the foundation work that needs to be done to make this six-hundred development project work. So again, the, the added cost is really covered within the contingency that is already within the plan, so this will not change numbers within the plan, but rather parcels and addresses. And then Brown, I'm sorry, items four and five actually deal with the same property. Brownfield Plan number seventy-eight, Temple Redevelopment Project at five zero two East Cesaree Chavez Avenue. We know that the structure on site was built in nineteen oh six. It operated as a church until nineteen ninety-three, was renovated and used as a nightclub until two thousand and ten, and then there were a couple of years there where this was used for space to house a art cooperative. In any event, back in, I want to say the year was two thousand and nine, city council approved Brownfield Plan number forty-five. That, the development that was attached to that Brownfield Plan was never executed. There is a new owner of this particular property. They want to move forward with a new project that deals with office space and retail on the bottom floor. They want to remove mezzanine space, they want to remove attic space, they want to do residential infill. So we have to do two things on city council to make that happen, or we have to consider two things to make, to make way essentially for that to happen. Number one, we have to retract the Brownfield Plan number forty-five that was approved by council in two thousand and nine, and then we would have to actually move forward Brownfield Plan number seventy-eight. This is a thirty-year plan. It contemplates a total private investment of over nine million dollars. In terms of the eligible activities, we're looking at environmental assessment, asbestos-led surveys, abatement demos, site prep, public infrastructure improvements, and then, as always, the preparation and implementation of the Brownfield Plan. In terms of eligible expenses, you're looking at about two-point-five million dollars, but the state statute actually limits Brownfield Plans to thirty years. For that reason, only about two-point-one million of the two-point-five will actually be captured and reimbursed to the developer. Over the course of thirty years, we're looking at about four-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars in new taxes that will pass through the local tax and jurisdictions, and this will utilize the new universal development agreement. So again, both four and five pertain to the temple site.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein.
Okay, and we have LeAnn Carpenter wishing to speak. And you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is LeAnn Carpenter. I am from Liskey's Auto and Truck Service, and on behalf of the Carpenter family, I am here in support of the reinstating of our H Light Industrial zoning on our parcel one thirty-one on the east side of Large Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that was our final speaker. So we are to the referral of the public hearings, number one through five.
One through five will go back to the Development and Planning Committee.
Okay, and I believe we are jumping forward at this point to the Committee of the Whole Confirmation of Appointment.
Yes, Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I would like to move the confirmation appointment of Mr. DeShawn Leek as the Third Ward member of the Lansing Board of Water and Light. Mr. Leek is a lifelong resident of the City of Lansing. I, I'm almost positive he graduated from Everett High School, right? And he's in our Third Ward, which is also great. He's a journeyman plumber, and he wants to serve on the Board of Water and Light. And with that, I would move the appointment.
We have a motion on the appointment. Are there any questions or concerns? Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate my concerns, and again, it's nothing personal to Mr. Leek. I think he's a great person, but I just want to explain that I'll be voting no for the reason that the Board of Water and Light Commissioner position is so important, especially given our current climate crisis that we are all have become and are becoming more aware of. And I think, and many other people think, that the commissioners who ultimately drive the decisions for energy future and renewable future and just environment and energy in general, I think it's important that the commissioners have either some energy expertise or some environmental or renewable energy expertise. And Mr. Leek, he has a lot of great things on his resume, including volunteer work, including employment and family and all these things. However, the, the part that's missing, I think, has to do with the energy and renewable energy and environmental training, expertise, or experience. And I would ask the administration in the future, just knowing that it is such an important issue for many people, to just come forward and just do a broader search or at least consult with myself or other people, and I'm sure that we can get somebody with some of those backgrounds to be included. So that's just my preference for my vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you. Unfortunately, I was not here when you were interviewed, and I apologize that I didn't get to ask the questions that I would have wanted to ask. I, I agree with Councilmember Jackson that the, I would like to see the administration put forward some candidates who, who have some expertise, hi, Mayor, in the realm of environmental sustainability and mitigating fossil fuel usage and renewables and things like that. I will be supporting you in this realm, but I put to you, Mayor, that I really would like to see, just like Councilmember Jackson, that, that we do some vetting that really looks at some expertise in, in the realm of sustainability at the board. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for applying. We're excited to have you on the board.
They haven't sworn in quite yet.
Oh, all right. Thank you for almost getting approved for the board. Sorry, good call. I will state that we are open to anybody who wants to apply to the Board of Water and Light, and we are willing to vet and discuss with anybody regardless of their issue, whether it's our IBW workers on the line, whether it's environmental sustainability, whether it's affordability or cost. In this case, we had a resignation in the Third Ward, and, and we had a gentleman who stood up and said, I'm willing to do that, and I am interested, and I'm willing to put in the work, and that's who we recommend to council. But if Councilman Jackson or Councilwoman Dunbar or any of the folks who deal with environmental sustainability have candidates that live in the City of Lansing and would like to apply for those boards and posts, I am certainly, definitely willing. Unfortunately, in this case, we had no one apply from the Third Ward, and we reached out to several people, to the, the ward council member, to labor, to business, to, to really a variety of folks, and said, if you know someone in Third Ward who's interested and would do the, the work. And DeShawn stepped up, so I'm excited to have him once approved. And, and we are always interested in discussing positions like the Board of Water and Light, the Fire Board, the Police Board, any of our boards with any citizen of the City of Lansing who wants to apply, and we look forward to seeing those applications come into our office. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley, then Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam President, and, and I will agree with Councilmember Jackson about the critical nature of climate change and that we need to do something. You know, this is why it's so critical for folks who want to be involved to, you know, apply for the boards and commissions. You know, every board that we have is, is crucial to us doing our, our day-to-day work here in the City of Lansing. I know Councilmember Hussein and I are both serving on the Parks Board, and I always tell people, if you think that's a boring, you know, board to be on, try telling somebody, you know, they can't, you know, their park isn't clean or, or whatever, and you'll, you'll hear an earful, and so it is important. One of the things that we asked Mr. Leek when he came before the Committee of the Whole was, you know, was he willing to do the work? Was he willing to do the studying and, and do what it takes to come up to speed on, on these issues? Because that really is, in my mind, even more important. You know, you can have all the knowledge, but if... You know, you can have all the knowledge, but if you're not willing to do the work and come up to speed, it doesn't mean anything. So I appreciate that he committed, that he was willing to do the work. And again, that was, to me, that's critically important. It's, I appreciate, and I am very glad that you're, you know, wanting to serve. It's a wonderful board, and it is, again, an important board. So with that...
Councilmember Dunbar.
Actually, that may have addressed what I was about to say, was that honestly, I mean, I didn't study politics, and here I am. I didn't study environmental science, and yet I have a concern about environment. And so my request to you would be that you avail yourselves of any resources that we have, or meetings that we attend, or community groups that are concerned about the environment, just to make yourself aware of the issues that folks are concerned about, and that's all we can ask.
Councilmember Hussein.
As Third Ward Representative, I, you know, I wanted to be clear as well, I don't take appointments to this particular board lightly. The Charter empowers this board with kind of this unique executive and legislative authority. And so this is an incredibly important board. I talked to Mr. Leek at length on the phone. And again, as I said, when we vetted him in Committee of the Whole, we talked about environmental sustainability, and we talked about reliability and affordability of energy. And one of the things that was absolutely impressed upon me was that he was willing to learn, and that he has a desire to learn, and he has a willingness and desire to engage. And so because of that, I'm an absolute sincere supporter of Mr. DeShawn Leek to this particular commission. And I really appreciate Councilwoman Dunbar in what she just discussed. We actually talked a little bit about that during the Committee of the Whole process, and the fact that so many of us, when we ran, we didn't understand what local government did. We didn't truly understand separation of powers and checks and balances, and, you know, the role of city government within this larger context of state and federal government. And one of the wonderful things about the colleagues, my colleagues at this dais is that we have students, students of issues, students of structure of government and how things work. And I expect DeShawn, Mr. DeShawn Leek, to be the same student and kind of avid learner as part of the Board of Water and Light Board of Commissioners. So I appreciate you applying, and I appreciate your willingness, and I'm happy to support. Thanks.
Councilmember Washington, then Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. And I just want to add to that. When I was appointed a Fire Commissioner, I had not been a firefighter. You do not need to be the subject expert when you're appointed to these boards. But you have to be willing to work, and you have to be willing to learn. And there's more to being a BWL Commissioner than sustainability. There is also the affordability, there is also the workers, there's so much. And I do believe that you're gonna, you will learn. Yeah, you seem very dedicated. So just know that none of us are experts in climate sustainability up here, but we're all learning. And so I wish you the best. I will be supporting you one hundred percent.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. And I just want to speak on behalf of DeShawn Leek. You know, he's a plumber, he's a licensed plumber by the state of Michigan. You know, the motto of a plumber is to help protect the health of the nation, right? And DeShawn Leek proved that by being part of the city plumbing board. He doesn't want to see a debacle like Flint. He wants to make sure that the residents here in Lansing have safe drinking water for them and his family. And he wants to leave less of a carbon footprint for his children. So I commend you. I think what you're doing is very great for the city of Lansing, and I appreciate your willingness to serve. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Before we take the vote, again, I thank you for coming forward, for being willing to serve. In the Charter, it only states that board members have the same qualifications as someone that is an elected official. Your willingness to learn is admirable, and the fact that you have dedicated your career to learning and growing, we appreciate that. I often talk about the fact, when I first came on council, my issues, of course, were neighborhood, police, fire, safety. One of the first things I was hit with was the combined sewer overflow project. Knew nothing about it, but was willing to study and learn more than I thought I'd ever want to know about the combined sewer overflow project. But it takes a willingness, and you've indicated that you will do that. So with that, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And without, if you would please come forward, Mr. Leek, we will now swear you in.
Right up to the mic there. Raise your right hand if you'd like it for me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
As a member of the Lansing Board of Water and Light.
As a member of the Lansing Board of Water and Light.
Board of Commissioners.
Board of Commissioners.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And as you get signed in, and that, we will move on into our agenda. We have the Committee of Development and Planning, and that would be Councilmember Hussein.
First item that we're looking at is the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority Development and Finance Plan. We did have a public hearing on this October twenty-eighth, so folks are pretty well-versed with regards to this. It's only been ten years. So Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority was established back in two thousand and nine by resolution of council, and there have been a number of iterations in terms of boards and, but there have been, you know, a lot of opportunities for public to provide input in terms of the actual development plan associated with this corridor, as well as the TIF plan. And so it was, the development of TIF plan was vetted by the Board of Directors. I do believe they supported it unanimously in August of this past year. As previously stated, we had a public hearing on October twenty-eighth. Whether it be the development and planning process or the City Council process, we really heard nothing but support from folks that decided to be, to take part in those legislative, those respective legislative processes. I want to, before I move this resolution, I do want to thank Mr. Jonathan Lucko, who is the Board Chair. He's been with us at every step of the process. We really appreciate that. And I also want to say thank you to a few LEAK representatives that have been fantastic in terms of, you know, shepherding these things through. Hannah Bryant is on hand with us, Chris Klein is on hand with us. I am going to slaughter her last name, but we know that, Anum Mugal. Is that close enough? Okay. That she really has been imperative in terms of, critical to the process, so we really appreciate everybody that's been involved with, or from LEAK as well. So with that being said, I would move the development and TIF plan for the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority, I'm sorry, for the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority.
We have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
And so we have a resolution of similar variety with Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority and Development and Finance Plan, same thing. So this corridor improvement authority was established back in two thousand and nine. The board was populated. They put together a development plan and a TIF plan after copious amounts of public input. And we are here, we did have a public hearing on October twenty-eighth. The Board of Directors approved this, I believe, at their August twenty-eighth meeting. That was a unanimous vote, I do believe. We are lucky enough to have Board Chair with us, Jonathan Lum. Yvette Collins has been participatory in some of these meetings. We've also had Joan Nelson, who is also on the board, that's been engaged throughout. And so we certainly appreciate them. With regards to, and maybe I should have discussed this just a little bit, with the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority Development and Finance Plan, but the development plan really does have a number of short-term and long-term goals to really move these critical corridors forward. And then the TIF plans, both respectively, are fifteen-year TIF plans, and they only, I actually have this question between Committee of the Whole and Council, so I wanted to address this. The tax capture associated with the TIF plan pertains to the commercial properties within the development district. So I wanted to make sure that that question was answered as well. And they are not, these aren't new taxes. So essentially, the capture is on new taxes associated with property growth. So the taxes that local tax and jurisdictions get now, they will continue to get. And again, this is new taxes associated with property value growth. With that being said, again, I'd like to thank everybody involved, and I will move the resolution for the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority Development and Finance Plan.
We have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
We are to the Committee on Personnel.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'd like to move the resolution for a City Council Staff Time Bank Request. I don't have the, I'll just move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
We are to the Committee on Public Services.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. So what we have before us is Act Fifteen to two thousand and nineteen. The Parks Department will be acquiring a parcel of land currently owned by the Land Bank for one dollar plus closing costs. The closing costs will be paid out of the Parks Land Acquisition Account. This parcel is located in the flood plain on the riverfront east of Edmore Park. Edmore Park surrounds a land bank parcel. The acquisition of this parcel will add to Edmore Park, creating a continuous parcel of park land. So Edmore Park is, what is it, north of Handys, right?
Yes.
So off Willow, so north of Willow. It's a little park in that neighborhood back there. So there's no plan to develop this parcel at this time, only to add to the existing park. With that, I would move the resolution.
Have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? I will say that this neighborhood's waited for that property to be given to the park, so we're, they're looking forward to it. So with that, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
And we are to the Committee of the Whole.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is a motion, a resolution for confirmation of reappointments for Mitch Rice as an at-large member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, for Carol Skilling as an at-large member of the Historic District Commission, for Cynthia L. Bowen as an at-large member of the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority. And with that, I move the resolution to confirm the reappointments.
We have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have is a resolution to set the City Council meeting schedule for two thousand and twenty, with the first meeting scheduled for Monday, January sixth, two thousand and twenty. With that, I move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction. We have an ordinance from the Committee on Public Safety introduced, an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to amend Chapter four oh four of the Lansing Codified Ordinances by adding Section four oh four point one-three to provide for the issuance of annual and temporary two AM to five AM street parking permits to city of Lansing residents and to provide for permit applications, limitations, and fees. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Public Safety.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us, ordinance for introduction. Introduction and setting of the public hearing. The public hearing will be set for Monday, December second, two thousand and nineteen, here in the City Council chambers. This is, this ordinance has been worked on for several years, providing, discussing overnight street parking primarily in residential districts and hours for use. Some of the highlights of the ordinance as is written today are, an applicant, there is one application per resident, residential address for a permanent annual permit. The applicant must provide an explanation for the need to park on a residential street between the hours of two to five AM. No more than one annual permit may be granted for, per residential address. There's also, at this point, the opportunity for temporary permits, and those permits are for a period of seventy-two hours. They will be issued by the parking manager, and they must be applied for by the resident where the permit will be used. As the ordinance is written right now, no more than four temporary permits may be granted to a resident sponsored for a twelve-month period. The permits may be used only by the permit holder to whom it has been issued. And the enforcement of these parking, these parking ordinance will be the responsibility of the Parking Enforcement Office. And there will be, it is anticipated that the fees from this will allow us to hire a Parking Enforcement Officer assigned for the evening hours. With that, I move, and I'll move to establish the public hearing for December second.
We have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. And I know that there's a public hearing. Just a question, who decides the need? Is it the parking manager?
The parking manager's office will determine that.
Okay. And, I mean, just as you all know, there's a lot of people, especially in our downtown and the west side, who have legitimate needs, so I'm just hoping that it'll cover them. And the parking manager won't be just, I don't know, maybe have some guidelines, but I just hope that people get covered who needs it.
That will be handled as part of policy by the parking manager, and if there's issues that come up, we can, we'll definitely hear about them, I'm sure. But I think the premises is to make sure that anyone who is applying, that there is enough room to have parking in that area. And again, this will not violate any current traffic orders. So let's say on your street, you have no parking on one side of the street, this permit would not allow you to park where there were traffic orders that prohibited that. And we also, the parking manager will also be looking and knowing the narrow streets and be able to determine whether they can justify allowing parking on those as well. Okay? All right. With that, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. And again, that's for December second.
And we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sheet in the back. If you wish to speak, you do need to jump up and sign up right now, as that is about to be collected. And we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that all items be considered as read in full, and that the proper referrals be made by you, Madam President.
Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
We have a letter from the city clerk regarding minutes of boards, commissions, and authorities.
Placed on file.
Letter from the mayor regarding objecting to the transfer of unsold tax-reverted properties from the Ingham County Treasurer to the city of Lansing.
Excuse me, Development and Planning Committee.
Ballot proposal, parks and recreation, village renewal.
And that's Committee of the Whole? And if I'm correct on this, this is...
For August.
For August? For August. So anyone that's thinking that this is right around the corner, it is not. So, next.
Act Six, two thousand and nineteen, and Act Seven, two thousand and nineteen, and Act Eight of two thousand and nineteen, their acquisition of several parcels of property.
And this is to add to parks? So with that, that would go to Public Service Committee.
The appointment of Monty Jackson the second as an at-large member of the Planning Board.
Development and Planning Committee.
The appointment of Jeffrey A. Brown as an at-large member of the Human Relations and Community Services Board.
General Services.
Communications and petitions, a notice from the Liquor Control Commission regarding SBR M ninety-nine Inc. request to transfer an SDD, an SDM liquor license from five zero sixteen South Martin Luther King to five zero zero eight South Martin Luther King.
General Services Committee.
And a communication from David Wenglosky about the collection bin ordinance.
Public Safety Committee.
We are to motion of excused absence.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to excuse Vice President Peter Spatafor.
We have a motion to excuse Vice President Spatafor. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Remarks by councilmembers?
Are there any closing remarks by councilmembers? Seeing none?
Remarks by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
I will say that Director Koschinsky did offer to pay the one dollar for Edmore Park, so if you need me to get him to bring you the dollar, we can do that.
Okay. Well, I think it, I think it also said end closing costs. Sometimes that's a little bit more.
I don't know that he offered that, so...
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Is anybody getting a match? [inaudible]
Oh. Oh. Mayor. Mayor, mayor, mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes.
I totally forgot that we're that close.
We had another meeting in between, but we don't.
No, we don't.
So, yes, everybody come on out to Silverbells in the City. It's Friday. Thank you, Councilwoman Washington. We have all kinds of great activities planned. I know Councilman Jackson mentioned the run on Saturday. But, yeah, Silverbells, Downtown Lansing, it's gonna be a fantastic parade, and we're gonna have a lot of fun. So I'll be there, clearly. We'll be in the cart, and everyone is invited, and we expect a huge turnout. Weather's gonna be like today. It's 45 degrees. That'd be fantastic. So thank you for the reminder. I have my whole list of things, and I missed that, and I, and I, I know. When you don't have council for three weeks, it made me forget, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Washington. Yes.
All right, we are to...
Called. I was just, I was gonna mention, too, that I always announce, and Alan Ross and I are together, and Alan is putting together his most horrible bad dad Christmas jokes, so anybody that wants to come near our announcing station to listen to that is more than welcome, but I will definitely call you guys out when you come by.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comment. We have Stephen Kokoka.
Stephen.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Couple things. I appreciate the fact that somebody is taking the initiative to get some of these roads in Lansing paved. Believe Andy Schorr has a lot to do with it, Mayor Schorr, on that. The problem we're having, though, is I don't believe the companies that are doing it know what they're doing, because the manhole covers is an issue. I've been all over Lansing, so I know this off of Willow, the new pavement they just did on Ottawa, the one right here on Capitol, Jolly, I mean, I can keep, I can go and go, you know, Logan, MLK, it's just, they don't know what to do with these manhole covers. They need to be looked at. There needs to be a committee. There needs to be an oversight committee. I know there's engineers on site, 'cause I see them, and I've gone there, and I've stood there all by myself, no other citizen, and I know this is a huge expense. No other citizen stands there. I go to the Capitol to talk to the legislatures about how we can improve our roads for the, for a period of time, instead of like, Willow was just paved last, two, a year and a half ago, and it was shut down for almost six months, and you go down Willow now by Patnells and by the other businesses down through there, and you'd think, it was really paved? Really? This is, and all this taxpayers' money's going into these streets and roads in Lansing, and it's not paying off. Because I drive two trucks. I drive my business truck, and I drive my personal Z71 truck. My Z71's a four-wheel drive, and when I hit a pothole, I couldn't imagine, and they're 18-inch rims. I couldn't imagine hitting it with a 14- or 15-inch rim, if you know what I'm talking about at all. And it's just, it's to the point where these manhole covers need to be addressed. It's getting, 'cause I get really angry when I hit one, and especially off of homes there before Patengale. There's some really bad ones, that if you hit them with your vehicle, you're gonna go to Liskey's and get a front-end alignment, or get your rim straightened out. And it isn't fair to the citizens. This is my playground. I love Lansing. I'm not going nowhere. I'm staying here. SK Tree Service is gonna be the premier tree service in the Lansing area. I plan on that in my future. That's what I look for. That's my goal. So I'll be dealing with you people for the, for here until eternity. Whoever's sitting there, who's ever making the idea to come up in this street, in this world, we're gonna come up. Lansing's the spot. It's gonna be the spot. I look forward to it. I, this is my city. I'm not going nowhere, but we need to make sure that whoever's doing the work in our city doesn't disrespect our city. Is that cool?
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah. Because these manhole covers, it's an issue. This is a serious issue. 'Cause if it's just the manhole covers, it's gonna be the street deteriorating next summer.